Hi, welcome everyone to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole Meeting, December 9th, 2025. I would like to excuse Councilmember Scott Goodman, he is not here for this meeting. First thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the Committee of the Whole, November 18th, 2025. I will take the motion and a second.
I will make a motion.
Oh, is there any changes or anything? Anybody have seen or anything? I didn't see anything, did any? Okay.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the minutes for November 18th, 2025 for the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that there's no problems with the minutes, I will ask all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing that there's none, the minutes are approved. Okay, our first agenda item tonight is discussion on an ordinance related to land use, amends updates, renames the existing Fashion Place West Small Area Plan to the Fashion Place West Station Area Plan as an element of the general plan. I just had to make sure I saw you.
Yes.
Zachary Smallwood and guest.
Mark Morris.
Thank you, thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
One time.
Yes.
Time flies, doesn't it?
Yeah. I think.
This is.
Oh.
I just don't know. This is.
Yeah, so I'll just do a quick little introduction, just introduce Mark here. So yeah, this was a kind of a whirlwind update to the Fashion Place West Station Area Plan. A lot of it, most of it has not changed. We updated some of the tables and figures and things. This was to comply with the state requirement for station area plans. So largely that is the implementation plan. We kind of figured out an actual vision statement, things like that. So I'll turn it over to Mark here for a little bit, and then we can take any questions you guys have.
Great, thanks Zach, and thanks for the time tonight. As Zach mentioned, this is an update to an existing plan that he has on the books that was adopted in 2021. The state legislation is very much focused on updating updates to land use and infrastructure around the tracks stations across the region. As a city that has a few of these, I'm sure you have lots of discussions about land use around the tracks system. The station area plan, like Zach mentioned, a lot of the time for this project has been spent on implementation, which is what the state legislature wants to focus on. So the discussion here is really looking at what are steps in the next five years that the city can take, as well as ally partners that need to be involved in those discussions. The city doesn't own significant land in this area, and so a lot of it will be based on updates to zoning and land use that can incentivize development. And so during this process, we've worked with UTA, we've worked with UDOT, we've worked with the steering committee Pam has been a part of for the last several months and as well.
A lot of fun.
Fun is.
Very knowledgeable.
That's great, it was fun. The discussions with the Fashion Place Mall management and ownership is to confirm kind of vision for their property as a significant landowner in the area. One of the focuses of the implementation plan you'll see in the document is looking at some catalytic projects. And one of the things that a catalytic project helps us to do is to say, okay, what's something that can kind of light the spark for the type of development that we want to see in this area? The plan itself is very much focused on context, and so each of these catalytic projects has a different context where development on the Fashion Place Mall parking lot, that would be a very different context from the neighborhoods that surround the station itself, which is primarily single-family residential, there's a bit of commercial along Winchester. And so the plan really looks at how do we look at parcels based on their context and updates to zoning that would help to achieve that. Each of these catalytic projects has kind of a champion, someone who would kind of take the lead. The city has a role in each one of these, but each one of them would have kind of different incentives and options to kind of take that forward. Discussions with UDOT during this project were quite, let's say surprisingly positive. They were really open to discussions of changes to State Street through this corridor. They obviously have certain motivations and factors that are in that process, but one of the catalytic projects that we've got in here, we called the life on state, is a sort of ongoing project of UDOT to look at how does State Street itself impact the communities around it, and how do we improve that? The city of Salt Lake City completed a life on state project just last year. You can see in real time how that's impacted a few blocks of State Street, the south end of downtown. In discussions with UDOT, again, they were very much like, we are open to doing more of these things, I think for Murray, the stretch of the city center here in this stretch of State Street, and also down by Fashion Place Mall. Those are two stretches that could in theory be done kind of in parallel with each other. UDOT very much put the onus on the city. They said, you have to come up with the funding, you have to start that process. But they weren't slamming the door in our face, which is progress, so. So again, this plan as an update to that previous small area plan, the goal is was to get it in line with that new legislation, which we have done. All of the discussions again with partners, everyone was very much on board and interested in the direction.
It's interesting that they want us to get this up to them on the Hill. But UDOT will help us to calm a little bit of State Street down.
So I can speak a little bit to that. So we're also, as you guys know, we're working on the behemoth of station area plans is the Murray Central Station Area Plan. We just had kind of a work group meeting with UTA, who is working with UDOT a lot closer. And as part of that, we're finding out that these plans will help inform the legislature. Like, we're kind of taking the approach that the legislature can come down on UDOT while the cities go up at UDOT, right? And so it should squeeze UDOT on both sides. That's a little bit of a harsh term, but that's how we can get to, you know, better transformation or transportation, transformations, there you go. There you go. Ha. So that's what we're hoping, and what I'm finding out is starting to occur, is that these plans will help inform the legislature, which then can apply pressure down onto UDOT.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Any questions, comments, discussion you'd like to have about the draft that we've put together?
I'm excited.
Pam's excited.
I really am. I like how it's gonna feel. I don't, honestly, I don't know if I'm gonna be, but. But we, I just want to make sure that what has is being sent out, that we keep it in place somehow, so the new people that come in will see this and understand what we want for this area, for District 2. I really like the idea of, I don't know if you want to talk about the freeway or not, I don't know, but I really like the feel of that, to calm that area down.
Yeah, I'll briefly talk about, as any of you who have been on pedestrian on Winchester have experienced, the walk from the tracks platform to Fashion Place Mall is less than desirable. That crossing of Winchester over 215 is no one's idea of a good time. So in talking with the mall management, you know, they hear from people who work at the mall, like, yeah, they would, you know, they would utilize tracks more if it didn't feel like it was 1,000 miles from the mall itself. Psychologically, it's much farther than it really is. It's a short walk, it feels like a very long walk. And so Winchester, in talking with UDOT, the Winchester Bridge, the bridge itself is owned by UDOT, the street surface is owned by the city. The bridge itself, they think it may have about nine more years, they were sort of anticipating 2034 might be kind of the timeframe for a complete rebuild of the bridge. So we found a really interesting project in Columbus, Ohio, where they were doing something similar, where they had a freeway cutting through a neighborhood that was doing something similar to what's going on here in Murray. As you can see, the freeway here in this picture on the top, they basically built a really wide bridge, and then they've actually built structures on that bridge. And so the experience, being, you know, on the street, at that street level, you have no, you have no idea that you're crossing over a freeway. And so this project, I would say, is a long and expensive project. But it's also something that would repair something that is a pretty fatal flaw for the kind of division of the neighborhood. If you're on one side of the freeway, the other side of the freeway is never going to feel like it's part of the neighborhood. And so doing what we can, kind of a strategic, if UDOT is going to rebuild the bridge anyway, starting the conversation to say, hey, here's a crazy idea, but something that's been done elsewhere. We have a lot of information how ODOT in Ohio kind of dealt with this. It was definitely a long process, but in the end, it's something that, again, if you're on the street here, there's no, there's no feeling that you're crossing over. It feels very much like it's the two parts of the neighborhood back together. So this project, again, a catalytic project, it's going to take a lot of years, but one that could really have a major impact on, you know, a human person being on Winchester, what that might feel like.
I know, I always ask this, but what is the timeframe?
For this plan?
Uh huh.
That's a great question. These types of plans usually look out 20, 25 years. Again, this isn't a master plan that one person is going to come in and build one thing, it's really saying, how does the city kind of approach implementation? So those catalytic projects, the hope is that all five of these catalytic projects would at least start some discussion in the next five years. The mall, they're, you know, they think long-term no matter what, and so their build-out is a very long-term, but there are catalytic projects in here that the city has a lot more control over that could start, you know, as soon as the city finds, you know, time and resources to push them forward. So I guess to answer your question, it depends.
I knew you were gonna say that. I wanted definitive answers.
Right. And one of the good things, you know, for all the times I'll grunt and moan about how the state's making us do things, and I hate all of it, some of, one of the good things that they did ask, well, require the cities do, is actually determine where funding can come from, right? So it gives us opportunities to find areas where we can go search for funding opportunities for things like this. And so I think that gives us a good head start, too.
So a lot of the onus, I would say, is on planning staff to kind of kick off some of those discussions, to say, hey, we've got some projects in here that, you know, the city needs to do X, Y, Z in order to accomplish. That may be something like Zach coming to you when you're talking budgets and saying, hey, we need to find money to kick off, you know, staff time for rezoning, or art design, or working with UDOT. So they may come to you and be kind of poking to say, hey, we talked about this vision, here's a thing we need to do in order to get the ball rolling. So say yes when Zach asks for some.
Yeah. We'll see. The state needs to say yes.
Yes.
And like I said, the working with UTA and UDOT, they've been very supportive. UTA owns a significant amount of land, and they have been very much like open to discussions to say, how do we start redevelopment of some parcels? They have not just their surface parking, but they've got some other land adjacent that could redevelop. Again, it's kind of a catalyst to other.
We could make it look nicer, the stations.
Indeed. Nowhere to go but up.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Are you okay, Adam? Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next discussion item is a resolution authorizing the execution of a second supplemental indenture of trust in connection with the city's electric revenue bonds year 2025. And the more presenting, 10 minutes.
Okay, so this is just a clerical correction, something that none of the 12 people who reviewed all of this bond documents realized was going to happen until the trustee did his, okay, what are we gonna, what do I need to pay or invoice Murray for? And he realized that there was this thing in there called a 1/6th, 1/12th thing. Basically, it said, our power company needs to make monthly payments into a trust fund, and then the trust fund, twice a year, will pay the interest, and then, and then once a year, will pay the principal. So he doesn't want to do that. I don't want to.
Who is he?
He, his name is Carl Mathis with Zion's Bank.
Oh, okay, because I circled who is he. I thought it would be you.
No, I don't want to make a monthly payment. He doesn't want to invoice me monthly.
Okay.
It's not like you can just do a drag debit or out of your checking account like you do for your house.
Right.
It doesn't work that way.
Okay.
And then, so he suggested, the Zion's suggested that we contact the bondholder since there's only one, because we did a private placement. And when I talked to Abby, who was the representative, on the telephone, she said, it contains what? So essentially, they didn't care, they didn't notice it either. So this is the paperwork necessary to have a second indenture that says this clause in the original indenture does not apply. So that's essentially what we're doing. And we're doing that so that we don't have to make monthly payments. And we're gonna bring that before you tonight.
Makes sense.
Get it passed, get it signed, and then, because we made our first bond payment December 1st, so this would start January 1st, so we're, and so.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to know who he, he was.
He is Carl Mathis at Zion's Bank. They're the trustee for all of our bonds.
Okay.
So he basically reads all the bond documents and is responsible for making sure that everything gets paid appropriately.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're moving right along, very quickly here. And our next agenda item is a discussion in ordinance enacting section 17.76.165 of the Murray City Municipal Whole to Residential Pond Set. Oh, Chad.
It's me. We got Zach, we got Zach on there.
Chad or Zach?
The wrong name was put on the paperwork and it's been carried through.
That's fine.
As I've been pondering, of course, this is a continuance of the item that we were talking about last meeting, related to ponds and adoption of that ordinance, potential ordinance. And I've been pondering what I could maybe do to help facilitate discussion a little bit more. I think it would be helpful, there were some slides that we threw in. In our last presentation, we didn't quite get to them, there were some that we thought might be helpful if we had this discussion. I might, if it's okay, just go through those really quickly as facilitation for this discussion. But if I had one theme that I'd like to just say for staff, that guides staff's recommendation on this, that would be ponds are different than pools. That's the overriding, I think, from our recommendation is that as you're looking at these, we ought to look at these different than we do for pools. We talked about that a little bit last time, with Harriman kind of backing away from their pond ordinance because of some guidance that was given in the international pool and spa code. But I wanted to show a few examples throughout Murray that might get a little bit more clarity about. Just as our, as a community, what we've decided, how we've decided to treat ponds in relation or in contrast to how we treat pools. So this, this is just to the, this property, let me just go on here. I'm trying to get it over to the other screen, hopefully get it over there. Okay, well, I'm just gonna, I'll just talk it through. So if you look at that upper left-hand picture there, you can see there's a pool and a pond right together. This property is just to the west of the Murray City Cemetery. This is an apartment, multifamily type, townhome type development there. You can see on that picture to the bottom right, this is that pond and pool shown from a, just the perspective of, well, of me, I was standing there taking this picture. So you can see the pond on the right, the pool kind of upper left. We recognize that that pool is different, we fenced it, right? We understand that that's a place that's conducive to swimming, to wading, so we understand that that's something that might be attractive to a young person or someone else to get into. But the pond, on the other hand, it wasn't designed for swimming or wading. It's not something that we try to create attractive places for entry into that. You can see those, I'm gonna call them ornamental grasses, you might call them something else around that pond, but there's also some big boulders that you can kind of see in the background there. But those, this was designed for a different purpose, as an ornamental feature, you know, to attract fish or to attract wildlife or whatever the case may be. Another example, this is to the east of the cemetery now, same scenario though, you've got a pond right next to a pool. And you can see the pond, again, not designed for swimming and wading, there were some ducks over there just off the picture. You've got a pool right there that's surrounded by a fence, right? Again, we recognize that this pool is inherently different from the pond, and that's just, that's something that we've recognized as a community and as really, all the ordinances we looked at, really look at these two things differently. Of course, we have some great examples throughout the community, Willow Pond Park, Big Pond, close to a single-family residential.
Yep.
Definitely has some depth to it, it's, you know, it's a place you can go fishing. There's a nice picture of it. I don't know what it was about the lighting that day, but I really like these pictures, so I'm not bragging on myself.
It really is pretty.
It really turned out kind of nice. This is some ducks, just again, this is the park that's just over there, not too far, kind of on the bottom part of that picture is that little Winchester park right there, has another pond. You can see there at the bottom left-hand side of that picture, of course, our golf course has some ponds there, too. But again, just as a community, we've recognized that these ponds are different than pools, though they ought to have a different set of regulations. Of course, we've got some there at Weither Farm as well that have some ponds that are established. So I just wanted to talk through that just a little bit, we didn't have a chance to look at those last time. The other two things I would say again is that we think that the Planning Commission did a good job of looking at this. They did forge even ordinance for adoption. The one piece they took out was that piece related to building permits. We have some hesitancy in that now that we have that additional information that was given to us by our colleagues in Harriman about that change to that international pool and spa code. We think that that's, that's worth a good, healthy pause to say, is that the right standard to use? Because that standard that many communities have used for the trigger for a building permit is a standard that really doesn't apply to ponds. It's a standard that applies to above-ground tanks. Many communities, because they don't know which standard to apply, have taken and applied that standard, but as communities look at that, we have the same hesitation, that's probably not the right standard, because it's really not based on anything related to a pond. The other one is, I wanted to just mention that we do have quite a few scenarios, and we'll go back up to our ordinance, the proposed ordinance, where we require standards but don't require a permit. And I'm just getting there to where what was recommended to you. But an example of that would be fences, right? We have standards that apply, people have to comply with those standards, but there is no permit required for just a regular fence around someone's yard, as long as they comply with those standards, they're good to go. Same thing with small, smaller, I should say, they're still fairly large, less than 200 square feet sheds don't require a building permit. These are fairly big structures. If you can picture a just slightly under 10 by 20 shed, that's not a small shed, and that, it can be built without a permit, provided that they meet certain standards. And so the Planning Commission's recommendation is similar to that, providing standards, providing some clarity for what can and can't be done with ponds without the need for necessarily obtaining a building permit. Difficulty in obtaining a building permit for ponds is that, as we talked about last time, you would really have to be looking for third-party consultants to create the type of information that would be needed to really assess the impact of that. And as we've talked with our city engineer, our building official, these are the folks that are experts in their fields, they've said there really isn't a need for that to be reviewed. Really, if you have these kind of standards, a liner required, minimal setbacks to make sure that it's not too close to a property line, electrical permits, we have electrical, those things are important, but other than that, there's not a large concern about the impacts of those ponds. So with that, we are, like we talked about last time, we're bringing forward this recommendation of the Planning Commission, that's it on the screen, that's what they recommended that you approve as your new ordinance for regulating ponds. And I'm happy to continue this conversation from last time.
Okay. I have a son who lives in Washington DC, and he's the vice president of the National Pool and Spa Association. I asked him, because I have a constituent that keeps telling me that it's the same thing, I asked him, so is a pool and a pond the same thing? And he said, no. He said, you can't even consider them as the same thing in any area or in any level or, you know, under any circumstance, because they're completely different. So, you know, I think we just need to get away from that, I would think he would know. But I have, I have a lot of concerns with this, and I've done a lot of, you know, research and soul-searching, and my concern is, if you have a building permit for a pond, what would the requirements be? I mean, how do you determine what kind of permit or a building that a pond is? I don't know if it's making sense, but I'm trying to discern, but.
The, you're right, that's one of the difficulties, is that it's not a structure. And with a pool, you have a structural component, there are, you know, usually you have concrete or some other type of liner or something, you have reinforcement for that liner because of the nature of what that is. With the pond, you know, in the original language that we proposed, the Planning Commission included, really kind of, and I'm just trying to see past Pam right now, I can move my own screen, Joe, put my glasses on. Things like information related to soil stability, erosion control, those are the kind of things, and those are the types of things that you'd need a professional, right, to come up with that information and say, well, yeah, this is stable, the soils can handle these pressures from the water, all those kind of things. What we've found as we've talked to, again, our building official, our city engineer, is that with a pond, because it's not designed for swimming and wading, and just because of the nature of it, that as long as you have a liner that would keep that water in there, which as we talked to the pond, the Wasatch Pond Association folks, they said, if you're gonna build a pond, you're gonna put a liner in, because it defeats the purpose if you don't, right? So when you have that liner in there, it prevents a lot of those concerns you'd have related to erosion, related to impacts to soil, because that water is contained. And because it's in the ground, and because the depths of those are not pool depths, they're not typically built to the depth of a swimming pool, we talked about that a little bit last time. Those concerns about, you know, the hydrostatic forces and those kind of things are just not the same as they would be for a pool. So there's, again, the consensus was that if you were going to require a permit, you'd want to have something related to soil stability and erosion control, but that almost universally, if you have that liner, it's gonna take care of most of those concerns. The exception is electrical, right? We don't want to, when you mix power and water, those are not great things to mix without somebody looking at that. But that's something that, you know, either the pump they've got will have some UL listings or things that can help people to understand what those requirements would be, or you'd have someone that would design that, if it's not a plug-and-play, but if it's one of these that's hardwired, you'd have someone that would design that electric plant. That's been required always by the city, that's a requirement today, it's required by every city that we talk to, whether or not they require a pond permit, every city requires an electric permit if there's going to be electricity that's hardwired for the pond.
We already have that.
We already have it, all, every city we contact has that, yeah.
So I keep, I'm wondering if we're gonna ease the problematic part of this ordinance? And if we, I think there's a lot of problems, I think there's some wisdom to eliminating it, and if we do eliminate E, I question why even go forward with the ordinance. Like, I'm not really sure what it's accomplishing at that point in time.
Like, I'm not really sure what it's accomplishing at that point in time.
That was like a symbolic thing with it.
Yeah, it just makes us feel good, but it's not doing anything at the end of the day. And I, well, I'm hesitant to add E to it, because it does add a lot of cost to it on a pond. Like, getting a third party in there, because if we can't do it in-house.
How much is that going to cost, the city?
Like.
To have another person go in and check that pond?
That would go on a resident. They'd have to pay for it when they're going for the permit, so.
Yeah, they'd have to hire a third-party consultant to come up with those plans. We would review them, or have someone else review them.
Well, what about going in and checking it to make sure? Just like you're finishing a basement.
Sure. Once we have that baseline established by a consultant, that's something that our, our folks are trained to go and check that type.
So you wouldn't have to hire somebody special for that?
You know, not, we don't expect that, once we have that baseline. Again, you can consider it the same as like a building permit for a home, once we have, you know, the, the basics by a structural engineer that have been outlined for what that can be, then our folks go and make, check and make sure those things have been done. But it's just a matter of establishing what would need to be done. And that, that does add significant cost, because you're looking at, for soil stability, for example, you're looking at someone like a soils engineer, so you're going to have, that's the type of person that would have to prepare that report.
Also, I have a, a constituent who has an amazing pond in their yard, and in fact, they've won the Murray Beautification Award twice. And they have this, this beautiful pond that kind of meanders on their property, and it goes to an area where they have koi. And so they have to have it deeper. So the koi have a place to winter. And so if we did 24 inches deep, they couldn't have that, right?
Without a permit, right now, the way it's presented, they'd have to get a permit for that.
But they would have to get, they would have to get.
They would be grandfathered, would they?
That one would be, right.
But Diane is talking about, don't they have to go deeper to keep the koi fish?
This doesn't limit at 24.
No.
It starts at 24, is where you have to get the permits. You could go 40 inches deep, if you wanted, 60 inches deep.
So we mentioned, we talked with the representative, or I think, I think he's the, the secretary for the Wasatch Pond Association, and they said 30 inches is really the minimum you want for fish to be able to hold over winter. It also gives them protection from predators, you've got raccoons and errands that will come in and sometimes try to eat those fish out of ponds, so that gives them protection.
Yeah. This is a hard one, because I have so many citizens that it will affect, I mean, the whole city.
Back to the 24 inches, though, I want to be clear, the reason why I think the Planning Commission made a wise recommendation is that that 24 inches is a standard that's, that's really from a code that is not intended for ponds, it's a standard that applies to above-ground tanks, right? So cities without any clear guidance.
Water tanks?
Yeah, water tanks. So without any clear guidance that, that these standards apply to ponds, cities have said, well, we don't know where to start, even, we'd have to maybe go through some huge analysis to figure out what the right threshold is, we'll just adopt that standard. So now, it might sound like, well, why on earth did you recommend that to us? Well, this has all been things that we've found out as we've gone further in discussions with Harriman, because like I mentioned, that they were the, kind of the model ordinance that we looked at and said, well, you guys have got it figured out, we think, you know, it looks like you thought through this. And they, they admitted, well, we thought we did, too, until we got that guidance from the, the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code that says, you really shouldn't be applying these, they weren't meant to be applied to anything but swimming pools and to above-ground tanks, the things that these were actually, they actually were, did the analysis on, right? So we, we think that, you know, short of, first of all, I, I think we want to be always careful about adopting standards based on limited instances of concern, but I think also, we would want to be very careful about now, with, with the knowledge that we have, since going, since you directed us to do this research, we now have new knowledge, and I'd be concerned about adopting this as our threshold, now that we know what we know.
Just something we should take before.
I know, but well, I guess the question is, do we want to move it to a council meeting and put it on vote?
Okay, so let me ask Chad a question first, before we go there. So if we don't pass this, B, anyone can build a pond within five feet of our property line, if we don't pass this?
Right now, we just don't have the standard, yeah.
Okay, so they can.
Yeah.
So if we don't pass this, then can they build ponds without liners?
They could, we think it's unlikely that they would, but they could.
But they could, right now, right? How about D, if we don't pass this?
Already required, yeah.
That's always required, so these are already.
These are, yeah.
So B and C are really the, the big boys coming in here saying, we need to be five feet from the property line and put a liner to that.
I think everybody would put a liner in there, you're going to just, unless you, unless you love giving us money in your water bill.
I'm just saying, there are people, and there are people, right? Right? I, I mean, if we have to spell, I mean, if we have to put warning on coffee cups, that is hot. There's a reason for that. There are people on this planet that need to be told to put a liner in a pond. So as far as, if, if we're at least passing something that will say, stay five feet from the property line and put a liner in place, I, I'm comfortable with that minimum standard and moving it forward to council. If you guys feel like this is going too far, then I don't, I don't know what your thoughts are.
What do you think, Pam? Go forward or not?
I agree with Paul on some of the things, like the liner and keeping it a property line. But my concern, I, I think people are going to do whatever they want to in their backyard without a permit, or with a permit, they're going to still do whatever they want. I had a neighbor that did that. He didn't, he, he did his own thing in his backyard. And are we overreaching into the other districts, because your district is having a concern with this? Are we reaching into District 1, and 2, and 3, and 5? I have a concern with that. I mean, we, yeah, you have to have a building permit to finish a basement and put a shed if it's bigger than, what?
200 square feet.
Right. I mean, you need a permit for this, you need a permit for that. Are the people really going to come in for a permit, for a pond?
And in this, in this case, just go back to what Paul said, there wouldn't be a permit required except for.
Right.
And it does give us an opportunity, if there is a, a concern from a neighbor, that we can say, well, here's the minimum standard that's applied, right? Just like with the fence, right now with the fence, we have rules that apply, you don't need a permit, there's still rules, so.
So I guess we could pat, go, bring it to the council, vote on it without E around it. Just delete E.
So you're all right going forward with E off? That's what you would say?
Yeah.
Okay. Diane, you only have like two minutes. Go forward or keep it? Keep it here? I mean, go forward or just let it drop?
I mean, what Pam said, I think, is a good point. I know I have a neighborhood that's very, very worried about it. Although we haven't had any complaints, or had any issues that I'm aware of, have we?
No, this is not.
Have you guys ever had? I have nothing, nothing from any citizens at all, especially with Willow Pond in my district. I haven't had any, has, has anything happened?
This is preventative, this is like saying, people use common sense, put a liner in there, keep it away from the fence, five feet, you know, just common sense things, but if we don't outline it, someone could, you know, say, I'm going to, you know, I'm there to build a pond, but I'm going to dig a hole in it and fill it up with water, see what happens, right? Next thing we know, we have water seepage into people's basements, right?
And that's, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, this is just common sense, I don't think it's too intrusive.
It does, yeah. Well, and, and you're kind of the, do not, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if you're okay with, with bringing it forward and eliminating E, then.
Okay, so I think it sounds like the majority is to send it to the council next time. So we'll do a vote. And there's council meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad, I appreciate it.
And thank you for learning more about ponds than I ever wanted to.
Yeah, I like ponds, they're pretty cool. I know they're cool, and we don't want to discourage people from having ponds, because their appearance can be really ugly. Thank you, Chad. But we want them to be safe. Is there any other questions or comments before we close this meeting? This meeting is adjourned, thank you.